May I please the Court?
May I please the Court?
Just before you start, I may, and this may I think apply to one of my colleagues too, I think I or some member of my family may have shares in one or other or both, I do not know which or in what quantity, but there it is, anybody want to object?
What for my part, my lord?
We decided there was no need for us to declare where our wives prefer to shop.
Or our husbands.
Or ourselves.
Or ourselves, exactly. Sadly, I haven't got my shares in either, so. My lords, I appear for the appellants with my own friends Mr. Coors and Mr. Banner, for the respondent council, my own friend Mr. Neil King with Mr. Williams, and for the interested party Tesco, Mr. Katkowski leading Mr. Linus. And, my lords, what I propose to do is to go straight into the detail of the statutory material without any reference, certainly for the time being, to our case and all the other materials which the Court will have read, and so I'm going to invite the Court to get the first volume of authorities. And, my lords, I hope it's convenient to start not with the section that the Court is directing, but with its immediate reach and which clears a tattoo to fund one of the authorities' bundle. And just as a reminder to the Court, that prior to the amendments that have brought the section into its present form, this is the section prior to 2004, R under subsection 1 to acquire any land, A suitable for and required in order to secure and carry out development, R, B, and then subsection 2 for local authority and the Secretary of State is per se considering the purposes of subsection 1A whether land is suitable for development, if I can read it, on regard to those three criteria there set out, planning permission is in force, and any other considerations material for the purposes of any application to development on the land, and then subsection 3, there was power to acquire additionally compulsory any land adjoining that, required for the purpose of executing works. And so, my lords, self-evidently, the test for acquisition at that time was a more constrained, higher test than it is now, in the sense that, in the vast majority of the cases, one was concerned with subsection 1A, land for carrying out redevelopment, but one couldn't embark on that exercise unless one has had regard to those criteria in subsection 2, and they led, as the Court will not be surprised to learn, to a number of challenges as to the meeting of those criteria, both in terms of compulsory purchase order inquiries, and indeed later in the courts, what was the meaning of required and so forth, on which there were decided cases. Well, going then, if I may, from there to tab 1, the section that's before the Court in its present form, and, my lord, before I forget, in the Westlaw extract that we have here, at the end of subparagraf A in subsection 1, after the semicolon, the word "or" has been wrongly omitted in translation.
That's after subsection 1 that lay.
It is, my lord, it's after.
Yes, yes.
To the land, semicolon, "or", and then B.
And what about, oh yes, that doesn't arise in one capital A, does it, because it makes it clear these are three, any one or more of those objects, so you don't need a junction.
That's right, yes. Now, my lord, can I highlight, please, the three material changes that have taken place in the reenactment, in the enactment of the provision as we now have it from its predecessor? My lords, self-evidently, subparagraph little a, subsection 1A from the previous section has gone, that higher threshold is reduced to the terms of subparagraph A if the authority think the acquisition will facilitate the carry out of development, etc., and likewise, of course, subsection 2 of the previous version has completely gone. And so we have in subsection 1A, self-evidently, now a very low threshold, merely to think that the acquisition will facilitate the carry out of development. Lord, the second change.
But you have to read that with one capital A, which we are going to look at rather closely, aren't we?
Indeed, my lord, yes. And then, my lord, again in relation to the new subparagraph A, we have the phrase "or in relation to the land", which is a new addition, and, my lord, that begs the question, or raises the question, of what land there might be that lies in relation to the land on which development is to be carried out, and, my lord, the sort of examples that spring to mind would be, the development is going to be a town centre shopping development, let us say, but access is required, or access is insufficient and needs improving, or laying out properly, or landscaping, or whatever, that is plainly land which lies in relation to the land on which the development is going to be carried out. And, my lord, one might have other, one might have other examples, if it's helpful just for a moment, one might have, again, the town centre redevelopment, where the development is to be carried out, but the land might say, "join a river on which there is an existing river terrace", let us say, or "river bank", a pleasant feature, "that land adjoining the river is not to be the subject of development, but is to be brought into the scheme and managed as part of the scheme, and it's desirable that it come into public ownership", that is land which surely lies in relation to the land on which development is to be carried out. My lord, at an early stage and consistently, the respondent and the interested party disavowed any suggestion that the Royal Hospital site, RHS, lay, quote, "in relation to the RSS", which I will call hereafter many times the CPO site, if I may.
Was one of your examples sort of access, I mean, if you need access, you're not going to develop it or improve it, but it's in relation to a particular development, it's extremely important, so you would compulsory purchase the access?
My lord, absolutely, yes, yes, and there are many practical examples, and one can think of access and others, where you do need to get in further land, but you're not actually going to carry out the physical development on it. And, my lord, the third, of course, is the introduction of the new subsection 1A, powers that, of course, were originated in the Local Government Act 2000, as the Court knows, but brought into this section as part of the other amendments in 2004 by the Planning and Compulsory Purchase Act of that year. My lord, just before I pass on to related changes, one doesn't overlook, although it doesn't arise for particular scrutiny, I imagine, in this case, one doesn't overlook the power in subsection 1B, one can acquire land which is required for a purpose which it's necessary to achieve in the interests of proper planning of an area, and, my lord, the sort of purpose which I apprehend is dealt with there, is where, for example, you simply have, let us say, a private playing field, private amenity land, not accessible to the public, one is not going to be carrying out significant, or I dare say, any development of it, it's desirable in the public interest that it be brought into public ownership in the interests of the proper planning of the area, and there will be other examples which could spring to mind. And then, my lord, I just asked the Court to note that in subsection 3A, we had, we have the ability to acquire adjoining land required for executing works, the Court has seen already, which that is, I think, a direct reflection and carry through of subsection 3A of the previous version, and I apprehend the sort of matter that's in mind there is land which we need to carry out, so rich works, let us say, for a town centre speed, can I next go just very briefly to accompanying changes, because it's self-evident, I suggest, that the principal purpose of the changes that we see in section 226 imposed in predecessor are to make this process more streamlined, less surrounded with the constraints to which I referred earlier.
Is section 226.3b interesting, because there, for example, the development is not to be on an allotment, you're entitled to acquire any land which is required for the purpose of being given in exchange for the land which is being acquired, so that the land acquired for the purpose of being given in exchange could be a long way away from the development, and that's an example of a particular provision dealing with that.
But it's part of my high regard, I believe, which is important, is part of that, where the section has continued matters of that nature, it has specifically dealt with the section, my lord, the point is, is in that.
Well, it could be somewhere away, it couldn't be too far away, or it would no longer serve the same section of the public as was entitled to the original.
That's entirely right, because it would be a suitable exchange. My lord, just as background and as part of the process of what I'm suggesting was simplifying and expediting these procedures, there were accompanying changes to the Acquisition of Land Act. Now, my lords, the Acquisition of Land Act is, of course, brought in through subsection 7 of each of them within the current section, the Acquisition of Land Act, I think everyone shall apply, and the Acquisition of Land Act, self-evidently, is the, I think we're not a further statute, but mainly the making of compulsory purchase orders pursuant to specific powers, such as many powers, and provides at length the processes through which a compulsory purchase order has to go and evolve, and the subject, in essence, where there are objections to a process usually involving acquiring, a process of confirmation by the Secretary of State. And we have the relevant sections, I hope, from the Acquisition of Land Act, in tabs 4 to 8 of the same number 1, and, I'll see in a moment, that amendments were made to these provisions reflecting what I'm suggesting is the main purpose of section 226, and that one is to expedite. Tab 4 simply tells us what compulsory purchase, within the meaning of the section, is, namely compulsory purchase to which this act applies by no other amendment, but again, we are engaging the Acquisition of Land Act by subsection 7, as I've just indicated. I then go to tab 6, where we are told by section 10 that this part of the act, which is part 2, has effect except where administer is the acquiring authority, so it's then an acquisition by a local authority, and in the present case. And then, my lords, tabs 7 and 8 incorporate substantial amendments to the previous procedure, all introduced by the same amended act of 2004, and, my lord, without wearing the court with all the fine details of this, the three changes that are helpful, I hope, to have as background are firstly, that by section 13A, little 2, subsection 2, a written representation. Procedure was introduced. Subsection 2, the confirming authority may proceed under written representations, we needn't worry about A and B, C, if every person who has made a remaining objection consents in this crime, so a consent process of written representations is produced. The second change, I can deal with very briefly, is in section 13C, which is the last page of tab 7, flexibility introduced by the ability of the Secretary of State to confirm an order at the stages, in other words, he's satisfied that part of the order can be confirmed now, he wishes to. Reserve his position perhaps for further evidence or consideration in relation to another part or parts, but in order to get the scheme going, he can confirm the first part effectively. And, thirdly, my lord, and perhaps more significantly, in tab 8, there is the ability, again introduced for the first time, for the acquiring authority itself to confirm the order, notwithstanding that subsection 226.1 says, "a local authority to whom this section applies shall, on being authorised, to do so by the Secretary of State", this section, tab 8, provides for, in limited circumstances, confirmation by the acquiring authority on behalf of the Secretary of State, where the confirming authority in subsection 1A notifies the acquiring authority that it's a proper case for that to take place, and that such a notice can be given in the specified circumstances of 3, subsection 3, that notice requirements have been met, that no objection has been made, or that all objections have been withdrawn, and the Secretary of State has the view that the order is capable of being confirmed without modification. And subsection 9, reflecting what I'd just said a moment ago, an order confirmed by the acquiring authority is to have the same effect as if it were confirmed by the confirming authority, so it's on that basis.
Could I just ask a very simple question? The transition from Secretary of State in the 1990 Act to confirming authority in the 2004 amendments, now I'm assuming that the confirming authority is the Secretary of State in England and somebody else in Wales, now is that the reason for that change?
My lady has caught me out, I think, I suspect it's the Assembly government in Wales.
Yes, what I'm getting at is that this appears in other legislation too, since Welsh evolution, one tends to have a split between the functions of the Secretary of State in England.
Yes.
And the Welsh Assembly government, or whatever.
Yes.
The confirming authority is the Wales.
Yes.
Do you think that's likely to be the reason for that?
My lady, I think that's right, can I check it, and if it's materially wrong, we'll make a note to come back to, but I believe that must be the position, yes. Now, I'm going to leave the Acquisition of Land Act and go back in a moment to section 226, seeking to indicate to the Court the material considerations that the section itself has in mind. Before I do that, could I just go to, for a brief moment, to tab 10? This is the section which, of course, is not directly before this Court for review or construction of itself, but lies in the background, as you know, and deals with the determination of planning applications, and there's few innocent words in subsection 2, "in dealing with such an application, the authority shall have regard to the provisions of the development plan so far as material to the application, and to any other material considerations", and it's that phrase, "any other material considerations", which has been the battleground for a great proportion of the litigation, including to the House of Lords and the Tesco case, of course, in development control. The section of itself, apart from plainly pointing to the fact that other material considerations must be, as the development plan, material to the application as a matter of construction, is limited manifestly in its guidance, but the Courts have built up extensive guidance as to its meaning and its scope, and one of those topics, one of the topics under that matter obviously arises as a matter in this case to which I'll come in due course.
I mean, there was a link under the unamended 226, was there not under 226.2C?
Exactly so, my lord, there was, yes, there was. Going back to section 226 in its present form, my lord, tab 1, and my submission over the coming part of my opening is that, in fact, in contrast to section 70 subsection 2, but in any event, section 226 gives us clear guidance as to the matters, as to the material considerations within its scope. Thus, I shall submit, we don't have to speculate whether a matter is material, we don't have to ask the question, well, why not, why not, why shouldn't the RHS development be material and within the scope of section 226, because section 226 tells us in pretty plain terms what are the considerations that lie within its scope. Lord, starting briefly, if I may, again with subsection 1A, "think that the acquisition will facilitate the carry out of development, etc.", well plainly, that raises matters relating to the nature of the development, the timescale within which it will happen, and many other considerations, and those considerations, my lords, are discussed by way of, of course, guidance only, but material guidance nonetheless, in volume 2 of the Authority's bundle, tab 30, the last tab. I beg your pardon.
Is it 31?
I said 30, I beg your pardon, 31.
31, yes.
As the Court will know, this circular, which is 06/2004, was a reissue of one, in fact, the previous year, but reflects the 2004 amendments, and it is the current guidance on compulsory purchase. Could I go, please, to come back to certain of these paragraphs very briefly, in due course, but could I go, please, to page 712?
Sorry, 7?
712, my lord. Where I hope you find appendix A, this appendix directed specifically at our section 226, and I just refer briefly, if I may, to the opening part of paragraph 2, in the light of what I've been saying about the section, "the powers in section 226 as amended are intended to provide a positive tool to help acquiring authorities with planning powers to assemble land where this is necessary to implement the proposals in their community strategies and local development documents", my lord, it just may be worth my intervening, if I intervene unnecessarily on this, please push me on, we've seen in the earlier section 226 a reference to the development plan. The 2004 Act, unhappily, we say, certainly I say, dismantled what some may have thought a perfectly good system of development plans, but there it is, into a new system, and that new system is based on local development documents, so local development documents are the post-2004, and now evolving very, very slowly, but then they're the new form, in brief, of what used to be referred to as development plans.
Where do you find community strategies?
My lord, I was just going to come to that, community strategies come out of the Local Government Act 2000. And if I interrupt myself just to take that point, in And if I interrupt myself just to take that point, in tab three of volume one, I should perhaps have gone there, and it would have been helpful. May I go backstage, because my lord's intervention is a supplement we need to make to tab three in a moment. Tab three, my lord, the Local Government Act two thousand, this is where these wellbeing concepts were introduced for the first time. Local authority, every local authority, power to do anything which they consider is likely to achieve any one or more of the following objects, and we're familiar with those three classes of wellbeing. Subsection three, in determining whether or how to exercise the power under subsection one, a local authority must have regard to their strategy under section four, and, my lord, I am guilty, I think, in not, I believe in this extract, including section four, and may we, is it permissible just to
Yes, yes.
And I'll ask for section four, particularly because the point's been raised, to be circulated, I hope all members of the Court have it. Subsection, strategies for promoting wellbeing, every local authority
must have a strategy, a community strategy, for promoting or improving the economic, social and environmental wellbeing of the area, and contributing to the achievement of sustaining the development of the kingdom, and other strategic guidance and moderation and so forth. So, that is the strategy which is referred to in section two, section three, and that is the strategy which, as my lord rightly picked up on, and that is tab thirty-one of volume two, very seven-one-two, their community strategies and development documents. The powers expressed in the right hand side definitely use high such authorities to assemble land for regeneration of other schemes, where the range of activities will be proposed, as I think specifically compulsory measures are appropriate. I think I can stop after that. And go, if I may, to where we find some specific charts on, section one, little A, enables acquiring authorities with planning powers to exercise their capacity to think that acquiring an authority will facilitate the carrying out of development, redevelopment or environmental integration, so that that being required, and it's not certainly available to acquire or create a new development, which means development given meaning in section fifty-five, and in the papers in the month we do have section fifty-five, I won't back down. I want to make a read on from there, there's a rather convoluted example of application of it in relation to, much less helpful, dare I say, another simple example. My purpose, my main purpose in taking the Court to this guidance, is in the light of the submission I've just made in relation to the terms of section two-two-six, one little A, and to ask the Court to turn to page seven-one-five, where the Secretary of State is advising as to allow the Court to have regard to on confirmation that the decision will remain on its own merits, about the factors the Secretary of State can be expected to consider, and then four are set out, and I suggest, hopeful, forbear their guidance, hopeful, one, whether the purpose for which the land is being acquired fits in the adopted planning framework for the area, or whether no such update framework exists in the core strategy in any relevant area of action plans in the process of preparation of the provision of the purpose there.
Manifestly means the purpose for which the land is being acquired, mainly the development, whether the development, the carrying out of the development fits in with the adopted planning framework. Lord, as a matter of background, would you forgive me if I again break off briefly to refer to the circumstances of this case, if I may, and that would be in the appendix, My lords, this is the key report, and it's by far and away the most important document in the background documents in the case, it's the report that went to the Cabinet with recommendations which were accepted in terms in the relevant resolution, so here is effectively the decision that's under review with its background reasoning. I'm just referring to this for one specific purpose, which appears at page two-eight-four, if I may, because it's no accident that the author of this report, at the bottom of internal page six, page two-eight-four, has a section five, the planning framework, so his eye is firmly on the guidance, and he is advising Cabinet on the relationship of the two schemes at that stage against the planning framework, and if we go, please, to page two-eight-five, we find at the top, not material at all, at the top we find the higher level of statutory policy guidance in regional planning, which we needn't trouble with at all. The much more relevant policy is the statutory development plan in Wolverhampton at the time, and indeed, I believe now, the Wolverhampton Unitary Development Plan, in which RSS lies within policy CC-ten, and we are told that the key proposal is development of a high-quality mixed-use scheme at Raglan Street, including a food, retail food store, bar fee goods comparison, retail uses, housing and leisure uses, and so forth, and there is supporting text which gives the flesh to that. I wasn't proposing to read that, and, again, it just might be helpful, I hadn't got, just give me a moment. In tab twelve of the appendix, there was a plan that the Court will have seen. This is an extract from what is called the Proposals' Map, it's a statutory part of the statutory development plan, the UDT, it's an extract from the city centre and fringes part, and it shows on the left of the plan what is called the site, it's pink, it's pink because that's how it is in the Proposals' Map, and in the original copy you would find, I'm sorry, it isn't here, you would find CC-ten, noted against that, the text I've just read. That is the RSS, Raglan Street, and then over to the right, there's a number of parcels, of which the RHS, with its bold lining as to the border of it, they are various parcels of policy CC-eleven, which isn't, I think, in the bundle, there's a separate allocation, separate defined purpose for that site, and, my lords, as a matter of passing reference, there is in the UDP no link drawn between these two sites, they stand separately, each with its own allocation.
It looks as though there are one or two smaller sites in the, as it were, the bottom left-hand corner, which are CC-eleven, brackets, little three, little two, and so on, so presumably that's the sort of grouping that is related to each other, would that be right?
That certainly is right, my lord, yes. You see CC-eleven, little four, you see that just north-east of the road, above the RHS, and you see, as your lordship said, CC-eleven, little three, to the south-west, and I think, I could have this checked, I think that one will find that within what is shown at the RHS site, and indeed, the pink land immediately to its south, one will find subparagraf numbers as well, which for some reason haven't been reproduced here. One season example, my lord, at CC-twelve, in the north-east corner of this plan, a number of parcels, disparate, or not all contiguous, but all with the same policy objective.
Does CC stand for something?
City centre. So, my lords, if we could go back to, please, to tab thirty-one, where I broke off to make those points. I was at page seven-one-five of tab thirty-one, I was addressing the Court on paragraph sixteen, little one. Sixteen, little two, the extent to which the proposed purpose will contribute to the achievement of the promotion or improvement of the economic, social or environmental wellbeing of the area. Self-evidently, as I'll come to in a moment, in terms of the section itself, proposed purpose in two denotes the purpose in one, denotes the development for which the land is being proposed to be acquired under subsection one, little A. Then, subparagraph three, the potential viability of the scheme for which the land is being acquired, I will make submissions about that in the light of a brief passage in the judgment of Lord Justice Sullivan on viability, when I get to it in a moment, but plainly, the scheme there is the scheme of development, it's all of a piece, and then more details are given.
As a walk will be looked for in general in relation to funding intentions, we use the highest to reassure the Secretary of State that reasonable prospects can be perceived as a all focused, and we would say, not in the least surprisingly, of the development for which the land is being acquired, and the viability for that development. And then, lastly, whether the purpose for which acquiring authorities, the person who acquired the land, is achieved by any other means, the company, the breakfast, or any other persons who are to be acquired with any other terms of the efficiency. So, my suspicion is all of a piece, all directed to the purpose for which the acquisition is made, made to achieve the development of the and I would submit no suggestion that circumstances in relation to some highly unrelated site
Just looking at little four, be achieved by any other means, suggests by means that don't involve compulsory purchase of somebody's land, but would they be wide enough to embrace by any other means, by means of compulsory purchase of somebody else's land?
But, my lord, indeed, as I can send it, I think I'll suggest that, it's maybe considering the breakfast of any alternative proposals before by the owners of the land, we have that in this case.
Yes, yes.
We have said it earlier, it is certainly
Yes, yes.
As I've come to, perhaps later, they could carry out a form of retail food store development on the land, but that's not as desirable as a local site, and if they're being required from the centre, that's exactly Can I go back to subsection one, category A? I'm going to make more detailed submissions, if I may, about it in just a moment, but could I just highlight at this stage, first, plainly, it is a proviso, it is a precondition to the exercise of the main part in subsection one, little A, but I know
Would it be right to use the word limitation or restriction?
Very, very interesting, you would use the term limitation, indeed, that is responsible and the second, second, well, the second main one I wish to highlight at this stage, for looking on that, detail later, must not exercise power under little A unless they think that the development, plainly, in our submission, the development in subsection two, with its basket of options to develop or approve, are used throughout the development, the development in subsection one, category A, denotes the same development, et cetera, in subparagraph one, little A. It is not, unless they think that the exercise of the powers would lead to certain effects, not unless they think that the process of acquisition
It's not really a limitation. It's not really a limitation on 2261a, is it? A limitation would be, but the type of development which will be facilitated must consist of residential development or something like that. That would be a limitation on a. One, capital A, is in fact certainly a condition to the exercise of one, little a. But it could, it throws the site wider, doesn't it? It requires you to consider not merely the development on or in relation to the land, but also whether the economic wellbeing or social wellbeing or environmental wellbeing of the area is likely to be promoted.
Prominent development.
Yes, so it's, but by that development, of course, yes. It's probably by that development.
My lord, I personally see it as a limitation, I don't. Whether it's pre-implication or limitation, I don't see it as a limitation on the exercise of the powers under one, a.
Well, certainly in that sense it's a limitation, but it doesn't cut down the scope of a. It's sufficient if it's any sort of facilitating of the development to get within a.
It doesn't cut down the sort of development that might pass through one, little a, et cetera.
No, no.
Mr Longham, can you give us a sort of paradigm example of what would facilitate an improvement on the land and not then, and then fall foul of one, capital A?
My lord.
I mean, how do you improve land without removing or improving the wellbeing of the area?
My lord, we've considered this. I think as the judge, Mr Justice Lyons, is my lord, focused on at this point, it is hard to think of cases I mean, the, the, where the one big a test would not be met and the development be carried out on its own. It's not possible, there could be acquisitions which, which would bring no material wellbeing, another bit perhaps, of a retailer who has a unit or a retail warehouse or somewhere. The reasons entirely are that he wishes to relocate one or two units onto the, onto the CPO site. Simply a relocation is going to lose jobs. The site itself is just going to stay effectively as it is. Perhaps it exists, shaped in the future. And so whether there will be wellbeing for such an excitement might be questionable. My lord, I accept that those are, those are, would be very much of an advantage, I accept that.
And the wellbeing might actually be for an adjacent area. I was just thinking something maybe like an airport, if you want to have parking for the airport. And the airport is in one area and the multi-storey car park or whatever is going to be next door.
My lord, yes, whether that would probably be within one.
Couldn't you have, you could have a situation literally coming within section 2261a where the owner of, say, a factory said, we now need, with the improvements of modern technology, to install this extra piece of plant. And we do need this piece of land which is intruding into our site to do that. That would, and technically the local authority could then compulsory purchase it, could it? In order to facilitate the carrying out of the development, redevelopment or improvement, which would be a purely personal interest to that occupier. It might, however, be extremely deleterious to the economic wellbeing of the area because it might be a stinking factory and very noisy. Is that, that's a possible scenario?
I accept it with my word, my lord, that those are in the minority case, but they certainly are capable of existing.
Does improvement have a technical meaning?
No, no, it doesn't. Development does.
Yes, I think I know development does, yes.
Redevelopment is a term I can't recall. It's found elsewhere in the Act, but it is not defined in the law. And improvement is not defined. Our one decision, they don't, truly they are.
Through whose eyes is one looking?
Well, my lady, first of all, through the eyes of the local authority, subject in the vast majority of cases to the scrutiny of the Secretary of State.
What sort of improvement, if any, would not constitute development or redevelopment?
My lord, forgive me. Is your lordship asking me about the term improvement as opposed to development in subsection 1, little a?
Yes.
Or, right?
I was just wondering what it added. I suppose it's because of the technical meaning of development. Is that, does that exclude some sorts of improvement?
My lord, there might, there might be, there might be cases where one wishes to carry out certain improvements which wouldn't constitute development within the meaning of the section, section 55. And so one is left with improvement, yes.
Section 55, any minute.
Would it help the Court to see section?
Just to see the definition, as you might just clarify.
Certainly, my lord, it is in volume one of the authorities' and it is at tab nine, thank you. And it's in subsection 1, my lord.
I suppose if you've got a purple building, you might repaint it pink.
You might, my lady, yes.
Would it be an improvement?
I'm not sure.
Views might differ as to whether it was an improvement.
I'm not sure that these draconian compulsory purchase powers would be appropriate in that example.
Well, I was merely looking for something that might be an improvement but wouldn't contribute to the economic or social or environmental wellbeing of the area. Following up my lord's question.
Oh, in relation to improvement, my lady, it's hard to see certainly how an improvement upon land, if found to be an improvement, would not at least achieve the improvement of the environmental wellbeing of the, of the land, of the area, yes.
One can see, looking at how development is really restricted to the carrying of operations or changes of use, that kind of thing. If you're talking about the kind of verge at the edge of the river that you mentioned earlier, you wouldn't actually be doing anything with that. But it would create a setting for whatever it is that you're contemplating as the principal feature of the development. Would that be right? I mean, you might, it might be that you, that wasn't any problem in actually establishing a right to develop on the principal part of the ground, but there was a problem in getting the setting right in the interests of the environment.
Yes, I mean, that's possible, my lord. The example I gave earlier was where one might be doing absolutely nothing on that land, save bringing it into public ownership for proper management. And I was making that point by the term in relation to. You're not doing anything on it at all. You're simply bringing it into, into public ownership.
Do you want to do section 55, 2a?
My lord, I was addressing the Court on the second introductory point to the subsection 1, capital A, the new subsection. Can I just break off and refer by way of one example to the case of the interested party? At page 6. We find, at the bottom of page 6, we find submissions on 1, capital A. And I pass over paragraphs 22 and 23 and just ask the Court to notice, as I'm sure it already has, the extent of common ground, and it's merely what the words say. Paragraph 24, the wellbeing benefits taken into account must flow from the carrying out of the redevelopment, or development of the CPO site. That's plainly correct. That paragraph then feeds into paragraph 25, of course, which is more to the battleground of the case. However, the realisation of those wellbeing benefits is not restricted to the CPO site. Can I, in relation to that point, now go?
Could I just go back to 24? There's a degree of ambiguity there. Must flow from the carrying out of the redevelopment. It's one thing to say the redevelopment itself, the fact, the physical fact of it, must be beneficial. And it's another thing to say the fact that it happens must be beneficial. And the carrying out could embrace the latter.
Yeah, in subsection 2, it is, of course, it is the development.
Yes.
And, my lord, I think it's common ground between us all and would be that, if this is answering my lord's point, it's not simply the process of the construction.
No, the fact, the fact that it's there is beneficial once it's there is one thing. The fact that it has been placed there, because that then produces spin-off ancillary benefits that have nothing to do with the physical presence of the development at all, is another.
Well, yes, the, well, the employment that takes place within it, plainly, is part of the benefits. The, as I've accepted or asserted actually below, and I'm going to come to in a moment, the fact that in the case of a retail store as we have here, it will bring people in large numbers to this area, thereby enhancing perhaps trade along the way, perhaps enlivening a dead area of town. All these are matters that are part of the development and flow from the development on the site. And it could be conditions or other obligations of the, of the development as well. It could be, in fact, when our scheme was originally permitted on a call-in inquiry by the Secretary of State in 2002, there was a whole host of conditions, some of which required training plans and travel plans and all the wonderful add-ons that go with planning permissions and schemes these days. And so certainly those benefits, although not bricks and mortar, would be part of the development.
So the fact that the till girls get paid and have money to spend in the area is a benefit, but not the fact that the developers get filthy rich in the process of building it?
My lord, I'd have to see how that's a wellbeing benefit to the area, yes.
Well, but then because they are, because they make money out of it, I shouldn't use the expression filthy rich, but because they make money out of it, I mean, assume that they're local people and that there they're going to spend that money too. Because actually that's really, in a way, what's going on here. But that's not a relevant consideration.
No, no, it is a, it is a relevant consideration. Are the use of the labour, creating jobs, creating jobs, and the benefits of those jobs taken place within the store are certainly economic wellbeing benefits that are within the terms of subsection 1, capital A.
I'm, I'm, because I, I mean, I thought it was at the heart of your case that the advantage here to the developers by making money through development isn't relevant.
My lord, the fact that Tesco gain effectively a benefit by linking their RHS, a completely unrelated site whose development is in no sense part of or related to this site and the purpose for which this site is being acquired, those matters are irrelevant. That is at the heart of my case. The benefits that can flow from the development of the RSS, the development of a store on the CPO site, are highly material in all cases. And indeed, the guidance we just looked at is on all fours with that, my lord.
But for planning purposes, you, I think you would have to show there was a sufficient demand in the area for the facility you're proposing to put up, wouldn't you? And of course, if you make a profit, then that means that you can continue to employ the people you envisage. You can maintain the building and all the other things that go with it. And that has a sustainability which is part of the economic success of the venture.
Yes.
Would that not be?
Well, it would. I mean, in fact, these cases do not investigate in practical terms the size of the bank account and securities and assets and so forth of either Sainsbury or Tesco or whatever. These proposals are always mounted by, if I can put it, the big players. And it's taken as read that they will be able to fund and proceed and maintain their, their development. And if there is any doubt about that in a marginal case, of which there are some marginal cases, then the viability of the development, which I have indicated is, and the Secretary of State indicates, is without question a material factor for a compulsory purchase order will be, will be investigated here. There is a number of cases. I was the victim of one against one of my lonely friends not that long ago, where the viability of my client's proposal was effectively the key issue. And it was found that he didn't have sufficient financial standing and experience and so forth to do it. But that doesn't arise in the present case. Well, can I go back in terms of the, as it were, secondary effects of the development taking place on the CPO site? Can I go back to tab 31, please? A passage that I left for later. And it's at page 713 of tab 31. The Court will have doubtless read this because it, at least part of it appears in all the written cases. But we have the wellbeing power introducing paragraph 6. The wide power in little a is subject to big A. This provides the acquiring authority must not exercise the power unless they think that the proposed development, et cetera, likely to contribute to wellbeing. And then some sentences which I don't think, can I pass over? They relate to which authorities will have various powers under this section and the Local Government Act. And may I go to the last sentence, which has been much quoted? The benefit to be derived from exercising the power is also not restricted to the area subject to the compulsory purchase order as the concept is applied to the wellbeing of the whole or any part of the acquiring authority's area. And so, my lord, that's all of a piece again. And consistent with the submissions that we've made all the way up, that the benefits are not confined to what takes place on the site. They can emanate off the site by way of either the construction itself or the use of the development. And, my lords, we have always accepted and indeed asserted that that is the plain meaning and import of 1, capital A. And can I just, in this respect, pick up the respondent council's case by way of example, one finds the same in the interested party? Would I go to page 12, please? At page 12, paragraph 31, the question in the present case is whether the development of the RSS can properly be said to contribute to the achievement of wellbeing of the council's area by securing... of the counsel's area by securing or bringing about the undisputed well-being benefits of the RHS development. The words in one capital A should be given their ordinary meaning. If Parliament had wished of confine consideration to the economic, social and environmental well-being of only the land being acquired, it would have done so, although in reality, this would have made little sense. I think I can break off now. I'm puzzled by that paragraph and related paragraphs in both this and the interested parties' case. We have always, as I've said, I'm sorry to repeat myself, asserted that the well-being benefits plainly are not those just arising at the CPO site, but those taking place by virtue of what's happening on the CPO site into the wider area. It might be the immediate surrounds, it might be across large parts of the authority's area. Indeed, one could have cases where, I take this example. A piece of open scrubland, let us say, near a residential area, it's appreciated of itself by local residents. They walk their dogs, they're not, they're not a thief, and so forth. The authority concede a proposal for something of utility, something of infrastructure, let us say, bus interchange or a waste station, something like that. And they believe that the only right place to put this is this piece of, this piece of land, and for local residents, aren't seen, they're, they're suffering anything but damage. They're not going to suffer, they're not going to achieve environmental... But the case is, and it would be hard, you're principal to get selected, but we carry out that development, and if you still have wide benefits across the whole of the authority's area. That is an example in practice.
What you say, then, is encapsulated in paragraph twenty-three of your case, is it?
It is. Yes.
Could you just tell me on this? Their area in one A means the area of the local authority, because it applies to local authorities. I see it in appendix A, paragraph six, which you were showing us a moment ago, towards the end of that paragraph, it says that acquiring authorities who do not have powers under the Local Government Act can also make use of two-two-six-one A. They'll need to show the purpose for which the land is being acquired will contribute to the well-being of the area for which they're responsible. So do you then, you sometimes have to apply the words 'their area' to a body that isn't a local authority, do you?
My lord, not in relation to section two-two-six. I think this point is being made, because, and I find it difficult to understand, I have to say, the application of the powers of section two of the Local Government Act and section two-two-six of the Planning Act are different in relation to the authorities to which they apply.
I mean, it occurred to me that one example of a development which would probably be extremely unattractive to the immediate residents would be a high-security prison, but anyone who was acquiring land for a high-security prison would not be a local authority, I guess.
My lord, that would be, that would be right. Having said that, certainly, a high-security prison would be promoted by the Home Office through the Prison Service. But of course, the local authorities do...
M O J now, yes.
Bit out of date.
M O J.
Right, sorry. Shows I don't do high-profile public cases of that nature. But, my lord, the local authorities have certain services, obligations, and they will, I think, again, I'm not personally an expert on this, but they doubtless have... The scope of those functions extends, I anticipate, to those with learning difficulties, perhaps those in life in prison, those who require what's often called low-security accommodation. And you know, for reading press, that low-security accommodation is a very, very controversial form, don't you?
Yes.
And that perhaps meets, my lord, the example of that, if I may say so, that almost certainly is a function of the local authority. And I think that is where they need to find their buildings and land, or what's to happen with that.
There is a guidance note of a kind in paragraph one of the appendix, which warns us that the, when it's talking about acquiring authorities, it's a relatively restricted group of authorities, if I understood the paragraph correctly. I mean, one has to understand that. I mean, it's not talking about, for example, some utility company, perhaps, I don't know whether they still have compulsory powers, it's not that kind of thing. So they're authorities that have areas for which they're responsible, and one can therefore sensibly look at the site plus the area for which the authority is responsible, which lies outside it.
Can I just, just adjust, my lord? For completeness, my lord, in tab one of the Authorities Bundle, section two-two-six, subsection eight, tells us, as the usual authorities, are subject to a section, relatively restricted, and tab three...
Who does it leave out?
Well, it hasn't got national parks.
And nothing about, I think, seriously, for example, the common council of the City of London. The council, if, my lady, we go to tab three. Subsection one, section one-one. A wide arsenal of... So, my lord, if I may go back to section two-two-six, I was, continuing with these overall submissions and material considerations that are... Found in the terms of the section itself. Section two-two-six-one B, not, of course, a subparagraf that arises in the present case, directed, because the order is proposed to be made explicitly under A, not under B, but plainly, the material consideration would spring from that is what is the proper measure of the area, and is the first that's... Lied on necessarily, necessary to achieve that interest. So the material considerations, self-evident. And lastly, much less important, I previously referred to section, subsection three A, works, that would raise its own considerations if there were a challenge, but of a very much less important nature, of course. So, my lord, my overall submission from that tour through section two-two-six is that we find extensive guidance in the section itself as to the material considerations within its scope, reflected correctly, I submit, by the policy guidance, particularly in paragraph sixteen of appendix A of the circular, to which I've referred. Lord, I'm going to go now, if I may, to a completely different section of my submissions, which I have called the role of financial viability in planning and compulsory purchase. And I start with the planning cases, or more accurately, I start with just one of them. The Court would have seen from our three cases considerable reference to tab twenty-five in volume two of the Authorities Bundle. If I can abbreviate, the Monaghan case or the Royal Opera House case. And I'm assuming that the Court doesn't need guidance from me as to the facts of this case, but if the Court would like some guidance, then...
Well, I would appreciate some guidance if it's necessary to go beyond the summary of the facts in the cases.
My lord, I, may I in that case read three-quarters of the headnote? Would that be permissible? I just emphasised to start with, or note in the italicised bullet points at the top, in line one, the case is about material considerations, as one sees from the last line, arising from the Town and Country Planning Act, then of nineteen-seventy-one, section twenty-nine-one, and for the Court's note, that former section twenty-nine-one is now section seventy, subsection two, to which the Court has been referred. And, my lord, in overview terms, this was about the much-needed works of refurbishment to the Royal Opera House back in the nineteen-eighties, not viable of themselves, and becoming viable by virtue of the incorporation within the planning application and the development of office development at the back, now can be seen between the Royal Opera House and the piazza, and the spreading of, effectively, finance across the site, making the overall objective viable.
Can we just, the office development is where? You said between the Opera House and the piazza.
I believe it to be, my lord, is it Wellington Street that flows generally westward?
Into Covent Garden.
From Bow Street, I think, into Covent Garden. And your lordship will recall that there are deluxe fashion shops on the right there in a new development, and they go round the corner.
Before the development, there used to be a little sort of garden, which was, I think, neighbourhood developed, yes.
And my understanding is, I'll be corrected if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that above that, above those shops, there are large areas of offices, all part of that development, and they effectively wrapped round the back of the Royal Opera House...
Sorry, sorry. Five-hundred-nine G, or five-hundred-nine G. It's the number of the last name on the page.
Russell Street.
Russell Street, Bow Street, James Street, Montague.
Yes.
Fifty-one, fifty-four, one, maybe, just a few.
Yeah. Perhaps it's the other side, then. But they wrapped around, I'm sorry, I may have got that wrong, as to the Wellington Street, but they wrapped around the back of the Royal Opera House itself. Lord, if I can just quickly read most of the headnote, the Royal Opera House Covent Garden Limited applied for planning permission and listed building consents to carry out a far-reaching redevelopment, the central objective of which was to extend and improve the Opera House by reconstruction and modernisation, to bring it up to international standards, and to develop the surrounding area consistently with that project. Parts of the site were proposed to be used for the erection of office accommodation, which would be a departure from the development plan. Local planning authority granted the necessary permission and consents for the whole proposed development on the basis that the desirable improvement to the Opera House could not be financed unless the offices were permitted. The applicant sought judicial review of that decision on the ground into alien, that the fact that a desirable part of the proposed development would not be financially viable unless permission was given for the other part was not capable of being a material consideration which a planning authority was entitled to take into account under section twenty-nine in granting planning permission. Mr Justice Webster refused the application on the applicant's appeal, dismissing the appeal, but since in reality financial constraints on the economic viability of desirable planning developments were unavoidable, it would be unreal, contrary to common sense, to exclude the range of consideration. Might properly be regarded as a material, as a term of determining planning application, but provided that the art of determination or planning application was based on planning grounds or not on some material measure, and was not rational, are natural considerations which carry in reasonably related to the development, but therefore capable of being material considerations, which could be taken into account in reaching that determination and according to the legal authority happy with the fact. Signed, granting planning permission for the erection of the office, to balance the fact that the improvements approved of the Opera House would not be allowed to be rather taken permission to the office than not granted, against the fact that the office development was contrary to the development. So, evidently, this is a planning case, it's now a second-hand case, not a compulsory purchase case or anything of the type, but all of us accept that it's a material background to the issues that Court has to consider in this case. And can I just first go, please, to page five-oh-eight, in the judgment of Lord Justice Kerr. Five-oh-eight. Simply to note that his lordship is setting out... The relevant legislation, and at G, we have the old section twenty-nine-one, and, my lord, I won't read it, but at a glance, you can see it is what is now section seventy, subsection two. And the issue in this case was the term 'any other material considerations'. And, my lord, I obviously can read whatever parts of the judgements would be helpful, but, and the longest judgement is that of Lord Justice Kerr, the first judgement, but with no disrespect to that, and in the interests of dealing with this reasonably quickly, can I go to the judgement of Lord Justice Nichols, which is precisely to the same effect, but happens to be expressed very precisely? And can I go, his judgement starts at page five-three-one, and the passage that I would like to refer to starts at page one-two-oh, sorry, I beg, I beg your pardon, five-three-two, internal page one-twenty. And, my lord, I read these passages quite briefly, emphasising all the time that the test is, what is material to the planning application? And his lordship says this at D, that a planning authority may properly take into account as a material consideration within section twenty-nine, the practical consequences likely to follow if permission for a particular development is refused seems to me to be self-evident. For example, take a rundown site littered with derelict buildings. The soil is contaminated from previous industrial use. Preparation of a site for development will be expensive. Planning authority is anxious that such an isol shall be removed, and housing is the preferred use. An application is submitted for development with high-density housing. In my view, it is clear that in considering this application, the planning authority... In my view, it is clear that in considering this application, the planning authority is entitled to take into account, first, that a lower density of housing will not be commercially viable, having regard to the heavy cost of site clearance, so that, secondly, the probable consequence of refusing to permit the development sought will be the absence of any development for the foreseeable future, in which event the eyesore will remain." So, Lord, I just interpose very briefly that, as his lordship says, I think is self-evident, he is with respect surely right, it's obvious. Likewise, if what is sought is a mixed development, mostly of housing but including some offices, the planning authority prefers no offices on the particular site. But I can see no reason in logic or in policy why the planning authority should not be able to opt for what it considers in planning terms to be the best development available in practice. Some offices thus making a development of the rest of the site for housing purposes commercially possible. The authority can prefer this to no development at all. I cannot accept that granting permission for offices in such a case will be an exercise in the statutory power for a purpose."
All of this is on the premises, we're dealing with one site and one development. Now, whether that's a realistic premise, having regard to the geographical location of the various buildings, may be another matter, but...
No, it is, all the three members of the court agreed, whilst what were called reduction had a certain involvement, it's about the office block in Victoria, were discussed, all their decisions decided on the basis of the court's one application, one component within one application.
This would all be highly material if one was talking about an application by Tesco to vary the planning permission in respect to the Royal Hospital site.
Lord, it might be, and our country at the moment, the lordship can see in the papers that at the stage when Tesco's planning application to the RSS, Ragus Street, was being considered, at one stage there'd be a reference to incorporating the benefits of the RHS and Lincoln.
Yes. Yes, we've seen it.
Because of the difficulty, and indeed the planning permission subsequently has been granted to Tesco, fact, but not the document, the fact of that is in the agreement, that that does not contain any second one sixty, any other obligation other than to the end of its own settlement, not by the RHS. And then, Lord, at the top of page 121, Lord Justice Nichols deals, as did his colleagues with Mr Carmwood's strong point, put, it's a bit pre-sloped, but the book for the court, the hypothetical office block in Victoria, I'll pick it up just a little bigger, good permission for a commercial development on land in Victoria, and properly granted so much finance operations for the Opera House, situation in Covent Garden. Mr Sullivan, for his part, frankly, accepted that he could discern no legal precedent to C, which would be ahead, what happens within one building, B, what happens on two adjoining sites, and C, what happens on two sites which are miles away from each other. Now, I mustn't trespass too far into a case that's been cited on the planning case and not from the appeal, but I respectfully would suggest that Mr Sullivan, in the guy he had in those days, has lost sight of section 70, material to the application, that's not the basis of that. And Lord Justice Nichols responds in D, "I'm not persuaded by the reduction had a certain involvement, circumstances very similar..." By the way, that it may be unsatisfactory and unwise to attempt to state a formula which is intended to provide a definitive answer in all types of case. All that need to be said to decide this appeal is that the sites of the commercial development approved in principle are sufficiently close to the Opera House for it to have been proper for the local planning authority to treat the proposed development of the office sites in Russell Street and elsewhere, and the proposed improvements to the Opera House as forming part of one composite development project. If I can intervene, with respect, it's more than treating it as one, it was the planning application. They were one development. I continue, "As such, it was open to the planning authority to balance the pros and cons of the various features of the scheme. It was open to the authority to treat the consequence for the Opera House works of granting or withholding permission for offices as a material consideration in considering the part of the application which related to offices." And, Lord, when one just casts one's eye across the page back to the two examples that his lordship gave as self-evident examples, and the second of those was the mixed development, as you'll recall, the Opera House case is the same as the mixed development example that his lordship gives between F and H on the previous page. It is, one might think, self-evident, that when you have one development, you can balance the pros and cons across the site.
You were a little hard on Lord Justice Kerr in suggesting he wasn't succinct, but his... Yes, no, in fact, his reasoning is in fact related in his approval of Mr Justice Webster on 529 at letter D.
I suppose there are all sorts of possibilities, one doesn't know what the planning application says, but it would be very common for someone to say, well, I may need these associated premises in the future, they may be office now, but we may wish to expand in the future, we may wish to use it for administrative or indeed for artistic purposes and so on. I don't know what the application said here, but it may have been presented, or possible to be presented, as a composite.
Yes, but it was specifically presented as commercial assets for the forward concern with that, and not the use of the Opera House, because they would generate...
Yes. Is there possibly a link between what we see at page 529, letter C, where he's saying, Lord Justice Kerr is saying, "It would involve considerations of fact and degree rather than of principle", with what Lord Justice Nichols says at page 533, which reads as if it was a challenge to Mr Sullivan to explain the principle, and he isn't able to do that. So, and Lord Nichols is saying, well, I'm not persuaded really that one could, as it were, say never to these things, and therefore it comes down to the facts of the case. I follow exactly what you're saying, that one's got to bear in mind that the words are "material to the application", but what is material to the application will raise issues of fact, and there may be cases where one strays outside the application area to see what is material.
Lord, certainly, that's right, but I would, I hope this is helpful, respond rhetorically this way, take the location of the office block in Victoria or in Limmin, or wherever it might naturally be, let us say a residential area, and an application is made to develop that office block in that residential area, quite controversial, so that in this case, and with great substantial amenity objections by those residents who wish, and to strike them to the ground. And I know the reasons for drawing the office block in that residential area, say, the argument is made that everything else, P S S, and all of the reduction of all of it. And I would ask rhetorically, how could it possibly be material to that application? The last form of extraneous inducement. And what beneficial is that being to the thing to...
Well, Lord, I mean, that's what Lord Nichols, I think, is saying at page 121, that one can produce an absurd situation like that, that he's saying, well, I'm not persuaded that one can reason from that, that there's some, that one could provide a formula which gives a definitive answer to all cases. So, we are driven back, I'm suggesting to you, to the particular facts of this case, bearing in mind the criterion that you've drawn our attention to.
Lord, that's right, and there will be cases where perhaps an application is submitted within a red line, as we call it, and then it transpires that the development is a tactical viability, but next door, the... Or valid, or more, let us say, doesn't need, but it's from the scheme, so generational purposes in that case, no doubt, the red line could be amended if the application resubmitted. And I think that's the sort of example where their lordships are not pushing, as it were, to be too strict, when deciding the facts of the instant case, that there will be other cases which should show a tension, and this is a good example.
Well, geography may really have quite a lot to do with it, I mean, you've shown us CC11, which has got bits and pieces, all relatively close together, and one might be able to look at it as a composite, where one bit would reflect on another and so on and so forth, but you're saying CC10 is on the other side of the town, and you really can't draw that kind of reasoning from it. No, no. Yes. Should we have a copy of the decision in Bradford against the Secretary of State for the Environment, which is referred to by Lord Justice Stoughton?
I was going to come to Lord Justice Stoughton.
Would that be, I mean, it seems to be a useful dictum, I don't know whether there's any other dictum, a sort of backstop dictum, you mustn't allow that at any rate.
I forget the precise facts of Bradford, but I certainly need to bring it forward this afternoon or tomorrow morning, it's definitely helpful. I don't believe your lordship will find it as to your lordship's knowledge of this, because the principle of the government cannot be forced in surrender, as your offer discussed in both the Plymouth case and the Tesco case, the leading planning cases on that topic, are really the contained, contained in that area of the one year. Norfender, you know, the lordship's...
Why is it, as a matter of interest, in a word, objectionable? I mean, of course, you mustn't get permission, if otherwise it's objectionable, but assume that the planning permission is something that you would get anyway, I mean, why can't you offer to contribute to the local well-being of the planning authority in order to cement it?
Lord, you can't, because, well, I'm...
What's the policy against it?
No, Lord. Because we can go to the Plymouth case and the Tesco case, which your lordship could know well, but there is nothing to prevent within the terms of section 106, I hope that this is the last one. You can do anything in 106, you can do it unilaterally, you can say you have any cause of your problem, but they will not be legitimate to a planning application unless the test in Plymouth is as elaborated by Lord Hoffman or Peth in the Tesco case, on that. And that is that to be legitimate for the purposes of the planning application, the inducement you're offering, the offering you're making, must be both achieving a planning purpose, we can leave that on one side because nothing turns on it, but relating to the development, and it's the relation to the development, which is the issue in Tesco. So, as imperative, if I can take this example, where you had two competing sources, which were what was thought to be one condition, eventually two were granted, and Sainsbury offered, let me just think of two examples, either asked to offer, or did offer, two matters, and I would like to pick the examples, maybe with a separate life as well in the case. The store in that site was to be erected on what was industrial land, I think vacant industrial land, and there was a policy, as there invariably is, resisting the development for other purposes of industrial land, so that you don't lose the industrial jobs, you may get the retail jobs, but it is often thought that it's the industrial jobs that must be retained, or the potential. And so, in that case, Sainsbury offered a substantial contribution to the regeneration of an industrial site, that was a direct impact of the development, the industrial source was being completed by the development, it was being offset, accepted by a combination which would, it was thought, mitigate or perhaps completely offset the loss of the industrial source at the application site. Another example was that the development manifesting created that was a trap, and the discussion with the higher authority even so, that that could be mitigated if a part of that was brought forward, before you were to enable that. And as the lordship in the Plymouth case say, on regard to the right planning, in that case, this was again directly offsetting the impact of the development on the application site.
But it wouldn't do, I beg your pardon, I'm interrupting.
Forgive me, Lord, I just finished, these matters were incorporated within a section 106 undertaking or agreement, I forget which it was, and the test in the courts was, well, are these unlawful inducements, or are they legitimate matters related for the development? And the court formulated the test on the basis of a high earlier authority, that these matters must be related to the development, and they found that they were related to the development and could probably be taken into account. It's the same principle applying in the leading case in the House of Lords of Tesco, which shortly followed Plymouth.
But if you have something that's, let's say, visually intrusive, such as a wind farm, as you're proposing to put up, you can't, under section 106, offer to provide facilities in a nearby town, let's say a new swimming pool, or some amenity park or something, which is unrelated to the wind farm development itself, would that be right? I mean, you can't...
There are shades of grey here, there are shades of grey. One can have development that's taking place on some piece of land that's a resource for amenity in some shape or form, and this is going to be displaced, and so one would wish to recompense or mitigate against that loss, perhaps by the provision of a public park nearby, or possibly the other side of the ward, I mean, there would have to be some geographical relationship. So, Lord, there are shades of grey, but the principle which is at the heart of all this and is unshakable from the cases is that these matters must be related to the development that is being permitted.
You said you were going to refer to Lord Justice Stoughton's judgement in Monaghan. It's not very easy to follow his reasoning, or why he draws the line in favour of the development in this case, the only kind of pointer perhaps is that the office premises are in close proximity, because he starts off at the top, the question is whether a planning authority can permit undesirable development... undesirable development A as a means of securing desirable development B, that rather looks as though he's looking at two different developments.
My lord, yes.
And his reasoning for rejecting that analysis.
He's, well, he's effectively saying, I think, in that first paragraph, it's a preface for his later observations, that A and B are part of one composite development. I mean, one sees that, I think, from B, the extreme example given by Lord Justice Kerr of a derelict listed building, which the planning authority wishes to see restored, principle be wholly proper to consider partial office development A, if that were the only means.
One can understand the concept of a composite development, the problem I have with the facts, as I understand them in this case, is that it looks as though it was a bit of a fudge to call it a composite development, because some of the office buildings were, while close, had no physical nexus with the Opera House itself.
No, but, my lord, they were within one red line boundary, they were within one composite application.
Yes, well, I guess we don't want to go into the facts in too much detail, but so far as the block north of Floral Street that stretched through to Longacre is concerned, there's quite a helpful bit at page 516 at E, which shows that in fact, that bit of the redevelopment also did involve quite a lot of functional facilities in the way of rehearsal rooms, and wardrobe making and so on.
It's connected by a bridge, yes, isn't it?
And there's a bridge across, yes.
So, my lord, can I come, maybe...
In the changes, the Court of Appeals, but that's a piece of... But at C, on page 524, internal page 122, the judgment of Lord Justice Thornton, after the reference to Bradford, suppose that a developer wished to erect an office building at one end, and after the building of the swimming pool would be added at B, wrong, the planning authority to regard the swimming pool as a material consideration, although in those conditions, that case seemed to a little different, was developed by the planning authority to check, so that it can build...
Swimming pool for itself, provided he has permission for his office development. Bryson Borough Council may have come close to infringing that principle, I do not say that on its own facts it was wrongly decided. Where is the line to be drawn? In my judgment, the answer lies in the speech of Michael Dillan in the Newbury case, in the...
As the Lord's conditions, you chose must be fairly and reasonably related to the development, missing that they are valid, so much consideration as if they are material in the present case, in the rule...
The Royal Opera House B is a development which the council considers to be desirable for valid planning reasons. The building of office premises in close proximity A is necessary if development B is to occur, it can fairly and reasonably be said to relate to the proposed development which ought to be permitted. The whole is, to quote the words of Lord Justice Kerr, a composite or related development to the offices are not ulterior nor extraneous, they are part of the whole, which expresses a very... My lord, turning from the planning cases, which of course are not directly in point, not directly in point for the Court today, can I move, this is the end of this section, I think I can do it in relatively short order, to the compulsory purchase case. The subsection 1A, to recall, raises the question of the carrying out of development, and will that development be facilitated by making a seedy... Well, in contrast to the planning cases, planning situation, the mere making of a compulsory purchase order, let alone its confirmation, will have a damaging effect, it will have a damaging effect on the landowners. Their land becomes blighted while they are at liberty to sell their land, it's under the shadow of compulsory purchase, and there are effectively no remedies for commercial owners faced with that occurrence. For that reason alone, if not others, it is material that there be evidence that this is not a fanciful project, this is a project that will happen, and so that it will be resolved and carried out within a reasonable time and will be a successful development. And that, I hope, statement of common sense, is reflected in the guidance, tab 31 of In the main part of the circular, which at page 694 you will note is called the memorandum, and is generic advice for all compulsory purchase orders not specific to section 226, we find at page 697, above paragraph 16, guidance on justification for making a compulsory purchase order, we find at paragraph 17, what are hallowed words in our business on this, a compulsory purchase order should only be made where there is a compelling case in the public interest, and that is the sort of guidance that's being referred to by the Courts in the human rights challenges, as there have been to compulsory purchase orders from time to time. Paragraph 19, if an acquiring authority does not have a clear idea of how it intends to use the land which it's proposing to acquire, cannot show that all the necessary resources are likely to be available to achieve that end within a reasonable timescale, it will be difficult to show conclusively that the compulsory acquisition of the land is justified in the public interest, or at any rate at the time of its making. Paragraph 20, in comparing its justification, sorry, resource implications of the scheme, in preparing its justification, the acquiring authority should provide as much information as possible about the resource implications of both acquiring the land and implementing the scheme for which the land is required. And, my lord, I perhaps ask you to cast your eyes down the rest of that paragraph, which is all to the same effect, and paragraph 21 is dealing with the timing of the availability of funding, likely to be irrelevant, as fact. And at page 716, where we are now in the appendix A, dealing with section 226, paragraphs, at page 715, 716, I've referred to this paragraph under the heading Confirmation in my earlier submissions on the section, I took the Court through the sub-paragraphs of paragraph 16, can I return to sub-paragraph three at the top of page 716, the potential financial viability of the scheme for which the land is being acquired. And, my lord, it's all of a piece, of course, it is related, as all this goes, to the purpose of the section, achieving the development and raising the financial viability of the scheme of the development, for which the land is being acquired. On the face of this guidance, and the buyer's submission rightly so, the viability of any other land, unrelated land, is quite irrelevant. And if I could look very briefly at the judgment of the Court of Appeal in the appendix tab two. Yes, shall we do this at two o'clock?